All right. Good evening. Welcome to the September fifth Planning Board meeting for the town of Mills River. I'd like to call the meeting to order and let's start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, first of all, we'll start with the approval of the agenda. Are there any adjustments or anything anyone would like to add, subtract? If not, if there would be a motion?
Make a motion.
And, all right, thank you, sir. Do we have a second? All right, thank you, Mr. Cole. All in favor of approving the agenda?
All right.
Thank you. Next, the minutes from the last meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes or are there any suggested changes or additions from the minutes? All right, do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Or is there a second? All right, thank you, Mr. Kimsey. Are all in favor? Aye, aye. All right. The minutes are approved. And now for some public comment. Do we have any public comment? All right, if anyone's watching, we would welcome, come visit with us and give us your comment. We'd love to have input. It's always good to see people attend these meetings. We understand everyone's busy, busy. If I could speak, maybe that would bring more people in. But we'd love to have, love to have more people in attendance. Old business. So discussing a lighting ordinance text amendment. And hope everyone's had an opportunity to read this. It was quite a few pages, but it's very good information in here. So, thank you, Mr. Malachek, for putting this together. And if you'd like to talk to us about it, any comments, questions, anything? Yes, sir.
Yeah, we got this thirsty, I believe it was, of course, during the holiday coming up. And I printed it all out and I've tried my best to scan through it, but we may want to do what we can tonight and come back later. I don't think we'd be here all night if we actually take this. There's a lot of good stuff in them.
I totally agree with the amount of information, with the opportunity to look at it, but sometimes when you look at something the first time, then you can get together and discuss it as a group and you go back, you'll see things you didn't see the first time. So, I'm perfectly fine with that. Do we have, does anyone have any questions or comments about this? Especially questions? Are there things that you feel like we need to discuss? And there's a lot of information.
Got one question.
Sure.
I tried to research it on the internet. Does the county have a lighting ordinance? I couldn't find one as far as county goes.
I do not believe Henderson County has one. Hendersonville is, is the closest municipality that's adopted one, and that was just this year. If you want to, Mr. Chairman, I can just go through my staff report and kind of set this up.
Yes, sir.
If you want.
Grateful for that.
So again, at the last meeting, we discussed the need for a lighting ordinance. And again, including all this information wasn't meant for y'all to read line by line, but what I hope to do tonight is kind of go through it with you and highlight some of the things, at least I saw, in a couple of the different ordinances that we might be able to borrow from here and there, because I think some of them have good sections and some of them have sections that may not be applicable to us. And so we can just kick that discussion off. And let me share actually this on the screen so the public can see as well.
One moment.
Okay.
So the first one I wanted to review was Hendersonville's lighting ordinance, again, just because it's the most recently adopted one. And I believe they put a lot of time and energy and research into it. And I know there was feedback from the community about it as well. So just highlighting what is in this ordinance as an example, is that non-residential and multifamily uses are the uses subject to these regulations. Single family and two-family homes are exempt. So that would be detached, single-family and duplexes. And then, one thing all the ordinances had in common were exemptions for, you know, flagpoles, temporary events, safety lighting, construction lighting, holiday lighting, seasonal lighting, et cetera. And that was something we saw throughout all these ordinances. The Hendersonville one gets a little technical. They use a newer standard that I've heard of called bug measurements, which measures backlight, uplight, and glare from the fixture itself. And then foot candles, which is the general measurement of lighting on the ground at property lines to determine, and you'll hear this term over and over, light trespass. So light leaving a commercial property and let's say disturbing a neighboring residential property. So their main standards, let me scroll down to that section. On computer.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, single family and two-family units are exempt. How about a development which will be single-family homes? Would we require the developer to adhere to this until they're, so? Well, construction, like for lighting a construction site, like if you have to work at night, or the DOT that's out there, they're paving, you know, that would be exempt.
So my, what I saw through some of the other ones too is, and some of the other examples I'll show, they do require a lighting plan.
Okay.
And there's also some ordinances that require light setbacks. So one thing I was going to propose is for major subdivisions or for any non-residential development in the town, we require a lighting plan. They already know where the utilities are usually being wired to. So really, it's a matter of just identifying it on the site plan on a separate page and then including fixture details about what exact light fixtures will be installed. And from that, we would be able to determine, does it shine directly out? Is it straight down? Is it only partially down, et cetera? So
Sounds good.
That, that was one thing I was going to suggest for major subdivisions, include a lighting plan. There's also some ordinances that have standards for street lighting. So that, that, that would encompass a single-family residential. But I do think it's important, and again, this is just my opinion, that we probably not get into the game of looking at someone's floodlights on the side of their house.
Correct. Yeah, I agree. I think just having the ordinance will help people to understand that what you do on your property with lighting can affect someone else. So even though we don't regulate it, at least that.
Now, I believe it is Asheville's, and I'll get to that one in a second, that does include single-family homes. And there are enforcement provisions. So again, I, I don't think we're appropriately staffed for that. But some of these ordinances, and that's why I wanted to show you the spectrum, do go to the point that if my neighbor has floodlights that are shining in my window at night, I can call code enforcement to come out with a light meter and have that taken care of.
Sounds good.
Any other questions before I move on?
Well, that's pretty much, you explained my concern. I have the same concern, same thing. We exempt them. I mean, in the same mill dribble, we wouldn't take an acre of land to build three thousand square foot on. Take, take it home. I certainly don't want to have this bright light shining on the roof. But why? Why we exempting this single-family home? This is what it's all about.
We don't have to. That's for this board to decide.
I know, but I'm just bringing it up and I had it underlined, the O G product. Because that, to me, is what it's all about. While from the get-go to put in proper lighting.
So the, the other item with the Hendersonville ordinance is again, the foot candle measurement. So they actually state that you can have a maximum of one foot candle of light at the property line. And again, let's use the example of a commercial next to a residential property. Now, you can measure that in the field with a light meter, but there are also, I'm forgetting the technical term, lighting diagrams on site plans. I think it's called an ISO lux drawing that actually shows, based on the fixture and the height, how light will be cast and how much light will cover what areas. So that would be another way we could look at that if we require a site plan and an ISO lux draw, I think is the term. One thing that I know that came up in the Hendersonville ordinance when I was following this in the news was the conversion of existing non-conforming lights. So again, just an example, let's use a storage facility. A lot of the storage facilities have that wall pack lighting. That's just a box that just shoots light straight out. And there are instances where those have impacted residential neighbors. But again, some of these facilities have just been constructed and there have not been those rules in place. So, one thing Hendersonville stated is that it's only if, if you replace fifty percent or more of the lights on the property, or fifty percent or more are repaired, that you have to bring the entire site into compliance. I think originally they had a provision that everyone, it's called an amortization clause. Everyone had to bring their lights, again, commercial or non-residential in compliance within like a ten-year period, but I believe there was backlash from the business community about that. Let me fix this audio. Some get some feedback.
I think and you all have to confirm this, or I think if you call up Duke Energy, say, I would like to have an area light. I think they're going to bring in LED and I think it's going to be full cutoff, because that's pretty much what's standard.
Yeah, and I think that's because they use the, those are their standard fixtures that I think are also similar to the ones used for roadway lighting, but probably not as, right?
So if we, if we had a statement about, and this, Mr. Pastr, it might help, all new area lighting will conform regardless. So that would cover single-family homes, all new. And it shouldn't be an impact on anyone, because.
Yeah, I'm not trying, everybody's got to change out all these bulbs today.
It's going to be called, this is fixture. Sometimes not able to the right level. It's not just called.
But maybe that would be, so that's not impacting the homeowner to have to go out and spend money to, to do this. It'd just be if they get area lighting, that's what they're going to get. So then Duke Energy would know they've got to meet I'm sorry, I think that's probably out of order, but, I mean, out of the order, not necessarily out of order, but that was.
Nothing from the chair is out of order.
Oh, you're very kind. Can I take this chair home? I will agree. I don't know that my wife and cat will, but.
So the next one we have as an example is Brevard's lighting ordinance. Relatively similar to Hendersonville's. One additional provision they had was a light fixture setback. So you cannot have a fixture within ten feet of a property line. Similarly, they have a one-foot candle lighting maximum at the property boundary. They go even a little further and measure average light intensity across the whole property and set that standard at four-foot candles. Yeah, but, and so.
Like full cutoff as an example, what, what, is that obvious? What is that?
Actually, let me.
You have a, you have a one-foot candle diagram you can show me?
I do. Well, actually, I don't, I don't have that.
Serious, hit some of the words or.
So a foot candle, while I'm scrolling real quick to some drawings and the other ordinance, so a foot candle is ten point seven six lumens. So, think of, think of how many, how much light a bulb puts off, you know. And again, we're not talking about watts, we're talking about lumens that. I believe so.
Here's my definition of cutoff. If I was standing on this table with my eyeballs right at the ceiling level, I couldn't see these, these fluorescent lights, but I could see the light from the fluorescent lights and where they're hitting. There may not be fluorescent, maybe LEDs. But that's cutoff. It's not shining straight out per se, okay?
So the drawing on the screen is a decent example. And again, this is from Black Mountain's ordinance. And actually, one reason I included this is because the administration section, the definitions and the drawings, I thought were very well done. That is correct. Text attachment E, page one, right now. So this is just cutoff. So there's full cutoff and then there's cutoff. So cutoff, and I'll just read this. Fixer where light distribution, no more than two and a half percent of a lamp's light intensity goes above the horizontal plane. So again, the, the example on the screen is the best I can do for that.
So, a suspended light of some kind versus a flood mountain versus like one of its recesses.
It could, it could be directed any direction technically. It's just, it can't protrude or go two and a half percent above the plane of where the, the fixture is emitting the light in that direction. And again, this is new for me too. And then if we go to full cutoff, here's a good example. No light goes above that ninety-degree plane. Yeah, page two. And if, I mean, the best example is like an area overhead light. Because again, we're, we're talking about light pollution, not just on the neighbor's property, but also up into the sky itself. So again, focusing on some of the dark sky friendly properties we talked about in the last meeting, full cutoff is what achieves that, because it only directs the light where it's supposed to go. And there's not a lot of, again, light trespass protruding or going out into other areas.
So Black Mountain has ages worth of damage. So that's good for the site.
Yeah, yeah. And again, that was, that was one reason I included it, because I, you know, this is very technical and we will, you know, an ordinance is only good as what you define and how you can administer it. And so I think this is one section I'd recommend we, you know, borrow from them or look at closely.
Oh, no. No, it's good to get it out there and get it into the record. And there are some areas in here where that's appropriate. Like for a, a business that has outdoor lighting, they don't need those lights on when they're closed. They do need some security. We all understand the need to, to light a parking lot. And it's just, we want to make sure that that light.
Yeah, very much so. They're, they're standard across the lighting industry. No, that's, it was, we're good.
But I think it would be good to have definitions in the ordinance.
And drawings, I think, or.
And to draw.
Icon, yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Because again, if we do include residential, you know, people, people may not know.
Clarification, we currently have, we're working for nothing.
Correct.
Because we have to have definitions, otherwise we're developing ourselves.
Going back to not fifteen, I guess you say, the whole thing is. The city of the bar says, if it's scanning directly, Jason, yard.
Sure.
You were, sorry, you're for that. Great, okay.
And, no, no, please, sure.
This is a sorry, I don't think we're so, I think you know, help.
Okay, good. Well, I, I'm also wondering to the extent these applied emotions something like.
Correct question.
And, and I, I just, I didn't, yeah, so I think that that's a question I have in general about how, how these rules apply despite like it leads to emotion sensing like, or you know, like it's going to come off or and then it goes back off.
Well, I would say if the light is in projected where it should be, doesn't matter, you know, you got it that protect this area of light of this area. Motion sensor is something moved in it, but it's projected where, where you want it, not next door.
You can't temporarily break the rule.
No.
While it's on the third sentence.
There's a, there's a drawing in here that shows motion sensor and general standards for new outdoor lighting, it's attachment D. And it says, all new dusk to dawn security lights shall be full cutoff fixtures. The maximum rating not to exceed ninety-five hundred picture lumens. Basically, is that about ninety watts or sixty watts, something like that? And, and I agree with you, Ms. Marino, about the the motion sensor lights. Usually, they're up there to, you don't want them on all the time, but if someone or something comes through there, it's a security issue. And I'm wondering if maybe to an extent, those could be, we, we don't want to set up a situation where people call on their neighbor all the time. My neighbor's motion lights going off all night last night. But then again, you know, can we encourage people to keep the light on their property when this happens?
If it's covering the recupended area, it shouldn't be shining on the neighborhood. Then they need to correct it for, for, for. Just because I can see over their house, it's lighting up over there. As long as it's not projecting over on me, I'm trying to do my window. Not a problem.
Yeah, it may not be a question to answer tonight, but I.
Yeah.
Well, that's what we're doing.
It's something to consider.
Even not just for security, but when you come into your driveway at night. Yeah, that's very specific, but to say like, oh, it's protruding off of your driveway. But depending on the angle, maybe you have to angle it so it only lands on the driveway. I don't know.
It's a good, good consideration.
I think this stuff is, is becoming more and more important with the growth that we have. Houses, we have culture together. What triggers a major, major sensation?
More than ten lots? Usually those are the ones where you're going to have, you know, new streets, all new infrastructure, my, again. You may, I mean, I guess a good example too, of a minor subdivision that does have a new roadway with lighting is the Wintercrest subdivision, which is on Banner Farm Road, across from the Roper Farm, major subdivision. And Wintercrest, I think, was eight or nine lots, but it was still a new street. And I, I don't remember if they have street lighting, but it's quite possible they do. I, I just, you know, with a major subdivision, that's where our ordinance goes the extra mile when we ask for roadway plans. Usually civil engineers are already involved. So requiring a lighting plan, I don't think is a stretch. What does?
It, that's, if it's for state maintenance, then the DOT wants to get involved. We require DOT standards because that's a pretty well-known standard and we know it's going to work. DOT doesn't really get involved in lights.
Yeah, so yeah, so like Roper being a major subdivision, the road is built to state standards, because that's what our ordinance demands, but it can remain private. And if they ever wanted, I mean, getting on the site. And if they ever wanted, I mean, getting on the site track, if they ever wanted to dedicate it to the state. The state would basically require an inspection and engineer drawings proving it meets their standards, yeah. Yeah.
It's not so much.
Or should the town someday, should they, the town be set up to accept roads and maintain roads? Maybe not, but we wanna, I would think that we would want to make that possible if that were to happen at some point. Because what I've seen quite a few instances when I worked for the state is. The people, the the developer leaves, people now own the road. And it, especially if it's gravel, but it may not be built to state standards. Well, then it becomes a hardship. Because once a road starts to fall apart, it's nothing but money. And then they come and ask for help, the state is bound. Um it it's very difficult to accept a road onto the state system that's not built to state standards. Very expensive to get it up to state standards. So by requiring that upfront. That's.
What would be something we would want to trigger? And when we say trigger, this is for town, this is for you to actually review it on a site, on a site.
Yeah, and and I think, well, I guess this is something else for the board to consider. Do we want to actually require lighting or street lighting be installed? Or if it is installed, do we just want to require a plan so we can make sure it meets our standards? Well, that's kind of what I'm hearing is that I I don't know what the threshold is that requires street lighting. Um we, it's not in our code, so we've never looked at it. Um I just know that most of the major subdivisions here have them.
It's in a manatee. It is, it's a good thing to have some manatee. Streetlights, but it's also an expense. So if there there's a homeowners association, someone's got to pay the power bill. Um so then, you know, how is that money spread out? If it's something we require, then we're going to be requiring for the future, someone's got to pay that bill.
That's where I think Michael pointed out, that is a fair question, requiring it to exist, very important.
But if it's going in, sure, I I definitely agree that if they're gonna do it, needs to be done right. Needs to be done in a way that's going to be a benefit and not not detract from the.
Let me ask a question differently. Is is a decision to recommend be wired or not at a certain level, is that something planned which we could sit at all? Is this the right subject time to consider?
Sorry, requiring one?
What living structure didn't have street lights? I can give you a good example, they're happy, it's built in the village. If you go in there at night, and I've been there, done that, had to turn my GPS on to find my way back home. Uh they don't have a street light. I think there's one now, but there's one time, there's no street light.
But one of these ordinances pulled out that added to the new development, the new development. Uh required.
I believe Asheville does.
I don't see anything wrong with that. I think that would figure that out, yeah.
If the, if the streets are maintained by the city, then City of Asheville maintains the streetlights. That's part of street maintenance. And we got into situations where there were streetlights out there that the city was maintaining. But the road wasn't city maintained, but the, there was a, it was established, the city been paying the power bill. Therefore, does that mean that the city now owns the street? And thankfully, I left before that got really heated.
The need to develop, I think, is follow over to the future HOA.
No, my. And so on this commission, you own the streetlight, then the street. I can give you a little different, you know, for right down here, move off. Um, streetlights, you see that now, I quit a lot of hours before council to get that street light. And but we were paying for that, because we wanted that street light, we needed that street light, it was dangerous. And and we were paying for it for a long time. Came to the point, here, won't count. Sure, many years ago, and now we have a street light. They'll grow a page for it, put up by the beginning. And it's a LED.
That could be added to this, along with the. Rules, uh lighting hasn't performed, we could also add on the board, have council.
Yeah, and I think that's the intent of this. Again, what I heard at the last meeting was mention of dark sky. So again, preserving the the rural character of the town by limiting light trespass and light pollution. So I think some of the largest things to focus on are fixture requirements. If the board wants to focus on lighting levels at different areas of the property. Um. And then if you want to require new lighting, I I think that's something up for discussion. But I, again, for me personally, I mean, does requiring more lighting go against dark sky? Uh, I don't know. Yes, yeah. That I don't know, but they, yeah, but. Yeah, most, most of the major subdivisions that have gone in, at least since I've been here, um have streetlights. And they are the decorative ones, but they're the newer ones where the LEDs built in. And I don't know if it's full cutoff, but it is cutoff where less than two and a half percent of the light is going up.
Not blast balls.
No, no.
Yeah, I I agree. I think. I think for our first attempt at this, or the first time we we discuss it, we we look at. If you're going to put it in, here's how, this is it. And then. To include a site, a lighting plan, it's very, i- it's not a very difficult thing. Um, most of the people I know, their site civil engineers provide that routinely. Places like Asheville, uh other places, that's part of the package is the lighting plan. So I think that it it's not a big ask to make the, make this major subdivision provide a lighting plan. And I think if um there's gonna be outdoor area lighting provided by Duke Energy. It should meet the the full cutoff, I'm I'm a fan of full cutoff in that. If it's pedestrian level lighting, it should, it should meet, you know, to cut off at the very minimum. Because it's a lower, lower height. And then I think for a residential home, um. I don't think we need to get into people lighting their homes just yet. I do like the part in here about lit signage. Because I've seen it in in a few places where you're driving along at night, you think a car is about to hit you. And it turns out it's lighting for a sign and it's right there in front of you. So I would think that we would want. Yeah, the ground floodlights, they should shine down and not be seen, be shielded. Yes, exactly, because that's something that can impact the roadway. The DOT has standards. And I think that we should um support those standards.
I understand the lighting plan is required for residential, according to commercial. Is that required right now, if they're saying a storage facility, we're seeing a lot?
No, they don't, they don't provide it because we don't ask for it.
But we're not asking for any.
Correct.
I think any commercial.
We get you faulty back at residential, but I think we would, this.
Well, and that, that was the example that I actually responded to a complaint about was the new Summit Storage Facility. It's very high up elevation and there are some residences near it and they do have wall pack lighting. Now, because they were doing a phase two and needed another zoning permit, I was able to just have a conversation with them. And that they were amenable to installing shielding, which basically takes a normal wall pack light and directs it downward a little bit. Um so that with some additional landscaping, you know, uh the lights aren't gonna go away, but it'll, it'll help address the issue with those neighbors. My, my, the way I see it, just based on reading through these, is that we would start focusing on non-residential. So that means any non-residential use, whether it be a gas station, car wash, shopping center. Uh, storage facility, major subdivisions, again, primarily on roadway lighting. And that's about as far as I've gotten. I think, I think the rest, you know, I I would need further input from this board. Because again, getting into single-family residential, you know, do you want to regulate someone's lights on their property?
I think the only, for a single family, I think the only regulation we should have is for Duke Energy installed. Um. Area lighting or neighborhood, because I grew up with a a Duke Energy light, Duke Power at the time, right outside the house. And it just lit up the world and that was then. And, you know, that was installed because we had some stuff stolen, so, but.
Sorry, did who?
The townhomes.
I was just looking through some examples. I can look at that while you guys continue discussing.
Right, it's non, it's non-residential or. Yeah. Townhomes, yeah.
It would, I'm sure they're gonna have lighting.
They have to have certain safety, like, oh, that's not.
I think we'd need to include some kind of basic requirement in agriculture, in greenhouse. A year or two ago, I thought great bright lights. Buck up, Kenny, all the way over to Greenhouse over at Ladsen Road. Really bright, red, where, you know, they could have some. Dark curtains or uh dark, dark out blinds or something in those.
And I did research that as well and actually dark, the International Dark Sky Association, their website has a whole section on greenhouses. Um and I'm talking about, you know, um institutions or developments that are ten times the size as, size of Lakeside. On Ladsen Road, so mega greenhouses. Yeah, so mega greenhouses. Uh they had an example of some in Europe where there's a city of like a hundred thousand and then there's a greenhouse and the greenhouse outshines the city. Um now, I, again, I didn't call any of these other municipalities and and ask, you know, do you regulate agriculture with this? But traditionally, and I I mentioned this in my staff report, traditionally. Uh per state land use law, agriculture is usually only exempt in ETJs, which is extraterritorial jurisdiction. So outside of city limits, but where cities still have planning authority. And usually agriculture is subject to land use controls in city limits. Now Mills River is unique because we have so much farmland and we're trying to preserve that. So again, in Mills River, we exempt all agriculture, but I heard that brought up last time. And so looking at the research, really the only control is shades. Um whether manually done or usually it's there for the bigger operations, it's automated where they cover the top at night. So there's less light going up into the sky. I know Ladsen, I think, has at least the side shades installed, um because some of the neighboring. I think they did. They are, and they have very different light fixtures too. Yeah. And they hang lower, I believe, as well.
I can see it, but it's a big problem to get more greenhouses than we probably do.
We have people.
Well, I, greenhouses are one, one thing. I would not want to try to, um if there's a active, you gotta make hay when the sun's shining. And sometimes when the sun is shining, you still gotta make hay, right? You gotta get out there and do agricultural work. And if if they have to set up some light plants or something to to do what they gotta do or things like that. I I wouldn't want to be in, I wouldn't want to bother that because that's. I don't know of a lot of things like that, but I, that's why I hesitate trying to regulate agricultural. Greenhouses is a different animal, maybe, yeah.
I'm thinking future. Uh, we have multiple greenhouses like that low there. If it don't change the landscape, it won't be as dark. But not, where they could use. Top of blind, uh, you know.
If they have a rational shade.
Yeah.
Picture pulled down.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And they could still operate the same, just that they don't let the light out the roof.
It is not.
Well, I would be in favor of future green, maybe. Firing it as far as it's distance.
You can't have a trigger in there.
No.
You can't even, there's a trigger for, for, you can't have any trigger in there.
No, not for.
Now, they're, I'm talking about the, the indoor light, the outdoor lighting still.
Outdoor lighting's different.
Parking lots, buildings, street side, whatever. The interior lighting you have. Even going forward here. But since we're, concede we're having more than one need and I have. Have a conversation on the street. I say we move forward, talking about everything, not single family, interior. Everything else is in the same body.
Thanks.
My bottom question.
Mm-hmm.
So you mentioned Andersonville early on and the pushback about requiring all existing lighting ordinance to be in place over, in your period of this pushback, so they didn't adopt that. So of the other municipalities that you looked at and the research you've done, is it, are there more that have, you know, a a plan where everybody eventually has to adhere to or more than you know?
Most of them did not have that. I'll have to do a quick scan, but m- most of them did not have uh an amortization clause. That required all non-residential lighting to comply within a specific timeframe.
Do we have a sunset for any, anything else, signs? You know, we have pretty strict rules where our signs and that, people grandfathered in with the grandfathered in with the timeline.
Yeah, we don't, as far as I'm aware, the town has no amortization. To require compliance of anything existing, again. The the only example I can think of is corridor overlay district and building additions. Um but again, even with corridor overlay, a good example was the variance um for the skyline plastics on Jeffers Road. They were building a building addition that I think was about the same as their existing building size. Um but our ordinance requi- only required the new building to have those material, you know, acceptable materials. Which again, would. Which would make it look strange because then, and that was their case, you'd have a half a metal building and half a brick building. Um but as far as I'm aware, we, we don't require anything that's legally non-conforming or grandfathered in to have to comply.
Changing the subject a little bit, I think that laser lights need to be in this. Okay. I'm a pilot.
Oh, you're a pilot.
And one of the things now, one of the things that can really, laser energy is much more powerful. And it can cause temporary blindness, et cetera. Laser energy is much more powerful and it can cause temporary blindness, et cetera. Even a laser pointer. And, um. All these airplanes flying overhead going into Asheville Airport, et cetera. Um, a laser light show is the kind of thing that's generally put. In, uh. The notice to air operations. So that you're aware, uh, if you look at the chart for Clemson. Which I don't recommend after last night, at least for a little while. If you look at the air, the chart, it says caution laser light activity because they have, sometimes they have laser shows. There are, there are, yes. Yes, well, let's go fly, but, um. I think that, you know. Laser's one of those things that needs to have attention brought to it. That, you know, you can really do some damage. Uh, I mean, I'm not talking. The, the kids in the cat in the laser like that, but you know, if you go outside and just. Some people want to do it to draw attention, you know, like the old searchlights. And, and searchlights are in some of these ordinances that you don't set those up for advertising. I remember. Seeing them, somebody I think at Hendersonville. Thirty years ago had one set up. You could see the Jackson Building in Asheville used to have a searchlight on top. You could see for a hundred miles. And, yeah, and so. You know, those types of things. If it's permitted, that means that they've gone through procedures, they know how to reg- they know how to do this. That's a different thing, but. I, I like seeing those things included in here.
And Bun- Buncombe and Asheville's ordinances have both of those prohibitions, searchlights and laser. Displays, lights. Another thing to mention and. You know, just good to include, and I think we have this with our sign ordinances. You know, nothing that could cause confusion or similar to a traffic control device as well.
And there are, there are state laws against displaying traffic control devices. Um, people like to go to flea markets and buy an old traffic signal and. Set them up in their yard. If you can see it from the road, that's a, a bad thing. Same thing with. Road signs, stop signs, et cetera. You shouldn't be able to see it from the roadway now. If the states, you know, they're, they don't go out looking for things like that, but. I have been involved in some letters sent to property owners saying, you know, what you have is in violation of state. Statute and, you know, leave it at that.
So just a few other points I wanted to get through and get some feedback on. Um, so most of the ordinances we've been through, again, are about lighting plans. Lighting fixtures and prohibitions, you know, shining lights directly in the sky or into neighboring properties. Um. One I included that was the bulk of the last section of the attachments was the Dark Sky Association's. Model lighting ordinance. Um, and I just wanted to bring this up because it is a unique approach, so. Um, both Black Mountains, while I do like the definition and the. The images, they regulate light by zoning district. Similarly, Dark Sky Association's model ordinance, which was developed with the assistance of the Illuminating Engineering Society. Uses zoning overlay districts. Uh, to control lighting where you would have different lighting standards by district. Again, just presenting it to see if that's an approach. This board considers, or is Mills River small enough and rural enough that we should just do a blanket? A blanket requirement. Those were the two options, correct, yeah, targeting by zoning that I included. Um, again, I, I'm not saying it's, it's the correct fit, but I just wanted to present the board with different techniques.
Sure, and I think that's great. I think. We are rural enough and I think if, um, a use comes in, a commercial use. A way for them to show that they are going to be good neighbors. Especially in a, a rezoning or some point maybe a conditional zoning situation. Is to have a good lighting plan that will not affect the neighbors. I think that's, that's important. And, so.
You might be neighborhood commercial, but I'd have to check. M, MR thirty, sorry.
Maybe we could start out with something basic. Have a, a basic, uh, lighting ordinance.
Well, everything can always be.
But.
Maybe we shouldn't think too deep into it. Basic thing is that. A problem right now.
My thought was moving forward is that based on some of the feedback we have tonight, we would begin drafting text. You know, not, not a complete ordinance, but taking some of the things we've seen and liked from the different ordinances and. Putting it into a draft version for your review. And then we could continue the discussion about what you like and don't like in that, and then again. Can continue looking at these examples, um, about what we would want, what we would want to incorporate, um, moving forward. I think the only other thing I still need or would like clarification on. Is the foot candle measurement, you know, do we want to just focused on, focus on? Full cutoff, you know, dark sky friendly fixtures for new developments, or do we want? Um, actual light measurements at property lines and a limit set to that.
Now that I understand the cutoff, that's, that's definitely a priority.
I, I think we could, we could set a standard for foot candles at a property line. Which then could be concern driven. I don't like to use the word complaint. Because that puts it in a negative, but if, if there's a, um. A facility or something built next to you. And lights coming onto your property. Then it's a way to go out there and have a quantitative measurement. To say, yes, there's more than what one foot candle. Per foot here, and you can measure that with a light meter. And then that's a way to then, um, make sure that people comply. So it's a way to, to measure that. So I like the idea of having something like that in place. That doesn't mean that we should have to go out to every single new installation and go measure it. But. If there's an issue, then, then we've got something in print.
That's correct. So again, you, use it, using Summit as an example, if they had, if we had required a light plan and they had submitted with something like this adopted. And again, if they, I'll have to put up an example of an isolux drawing, if they show how far the light is going to be downcast from their fixtures. And if it is above the requirements, they need a different fixture, or they need. Now, enforcement, and again, is another way to bring. Um. Lighting nuisances, I guess, in compliance, so, you know, amortization is a way where the town or municipalities as you must. Change these to something compliant in ten years, fifteen years. But let's say I live next to, I don't know, a warehouse building with wall pack lights and we do pass this with a one-foot candle standard at the property line. If someone like that were to complain and if we were to go out and it was above the standard. We would have a conversation with that commercial property owner and maybe they just put, I mean, five-dollar metal shields on the lights on that side of the building only. So again, it's. Yeah, if, if we go with. Foot candle at property line standards. I'm just saying it's a different way to. Bring nuisance lights into compliance without requiring someone to replace all lighting on their property in ten years. That was one. Now, again, we, we do have limited staff, so I mean, it would, it would be on a.
Well, I hesitate to set this up so that we then have to go to existing uses. Um, I think if, if it's there, if it's grandfathered in, then it is what it is. To go and, and pass an ordinance then that we start looking for. Uh, people are not conforming and then try to make them conform, I think. Um. I would, I would suggest that if we do have a foot candle standard, it's for new.
In a lighting plan.
In a lighting.
Not, not me without with a photometer at someone's property line.
Not, not unless, well, I mean, at some point we may want to have that because. Um. The plan can say what the plan says and then what goes in. You're not saying that anyone would do that in Mills River or any commercial entity or whatever. But, you know, sometimes there is a mistake and the lo- the wrong fixture gets put up there. Because whatever's on the shelf may be what gets put up and then the light. Suddenly, if there's an issue, we, I think we need to have a way to quantify that.
Sidewalks over.
Sure, if. The light plan would, absolutely. Well, if, if then a light plan is requ- but there may be a use that doesn't require a light plan. But it's, I would say, would all commercial uses then require a lighting plan.
I would at least need fixture details.
Wouldn't we want to put that all non-residential period?
And, and major, major, so.
And then set a trigger for tri flags. Structure and a major or more than five, whatever we want to set that. The non-residential, but I think everyone has something.
And then a way to make sure that they meet it is to have a way to measure the light at the property line. So even though if it's not used for, for enforcement. Um.
Verification.
Verification or at some point. You know. At some point, at some point, maybe not now. But have. Everything new.
They were never grandfathered in.
So then, having a way to quantify it. Because just to say it's too bright, it's just like to say it's too loud. Because someone's definition of music that's too loud may be different to mine and it depends on the music. You know. My wife's waiting for this. If it's Pat Boone singing Crazy Train, it's hard to get that too loud. But, you know. Yeah, she's watching, I think.
So, I, I would say though, that there's no appetite, it sounds like, obviously for amortizing over any time period. Just in businesses or grandfathered in and that sort of thing. So I would, I would just counter a little bit what you said. I would be more comprehensive, I'd be as comprehensive as possible because. If, if we're not, then you have, you know, folks who come in, we realize it's a problem that we have to correct it and more and more come. So I try to be as comprehensive as possible now. It's, I know it's a little more work, but I, I think you want to do that. Because if, you know, somebody comes in, we haven't quite thought about that. Um, they're grandfathered in then at that point, right? And so while we're talking about it. Whether it takes one meeting, two meetings or whatever, we want to try to be as comprehensive as possible, uh, so we don't miss anything.
With still the ability to update it. It'll later, if necessary, so, yeah, I think that's a good compliment.
Isn't it true? Uh, would you distinguish the amortization point from, um, what you said about the new Hendersonville? Um, ordinance, which is different, it's not amortization. It's a hard word to say today, um, but it says that it requires. If you need to replace fifty percent or more, then you need to come in compliance and that makes a lot of sense.
Right, because there's a cost there, right, there's a cost there and so we're not requiring any cost, they're choosing to do that. And then that makes sense, but I agree with that, yeah.
So it's, it's not like within a timeline that you have to do it, but at the time.
Right, we're not adding that.
That was actually going to be my next question for clarification, so there's, there's consensus to include something like, a provision like that. That if you're replacing half the lighting, or I think it also says doubling the size of your site, which means fifty percent more lighting. Everything would have to be brought into compliance.
I would think something along those lines, with the old lights blue, right, so. Um, if they're replacing lights, we would want someone to bring that into compliance. I would think if that's the overall objective of lighting and dark sky proposal. We'd have to define, you have to define it, yeah, you'd have to define, whatever we define.
What you said, I'm thinking for was if they increase the, the space by more than fifty percent, then all of it. Or they just, what if they add forty percent? Is that forty percent new? Did, we didn't trigger the whole thing to be brought into code, but what about new?
You're, you're right, the forty percent that's new. So again, let's use skyline plastics as an example on Jeffers Road. They had an ex- an existing building, let's just say ten thousand square feet, they built an addition of ten thousand square feet. So, well, actually, that's a bad example. They built an addition of eight thousand square feet. So if we had this adopted, all the lighting on the side of that building on the addition would have to be compliant. But if they did ten thousand square feet or eleven thousand square feet, the whole site would have to be compliant.
Okay, so if, if they increased parking lot. By twenty spaces. And add a light, the new light over the parking lot would have to be compliant.
Correct.
I like that.
And the, and the same with like doubling a parking lot size.
Mr. Foster has a point. What about a replacement light?
I think we can put it in the ordinance, um, but I don't think that's something. I mean, we're not out checking fixtures, I guess is the answer. Uh, but that doesn't mean we can't include it.
I know we're not out. Taking a picture, as you said, but just to let them know that we would like to, if you're going to replace it. Bring it up to standard, if you're going to add some, bring it up to standard.
Would be more than just the light, it could be the. Right, that could be a standard that if you're related, that needs to go to. But yeah, well, I'll just put all that out there and, you know, proposal or draft or whatever.
All right. Yeah, I think we've given.
And, and everyone's okay, I assume, with the standard exemptions of flagpoles, seasonal events, all that stuff.
Christmas lights.
Yeah.
Which means I will have to take my Christmas lights down after Christmas. Oh, that's true. So now if I can get my bride to not notice.
Good point.
I agree. I think, I think that's, and we should really, if there, if there were a way to have some people who. Have greenhouses or are familiar with the business to come talk to us. And this is where, um, you know, now, if, if there's anyone in the public. Who wants to come share their opinion, because this is going to affect you. Hopefully it'll be a very positive effect. Um. Come tell us what you think, what is important to the citizens. We'd love to hear that input. That's right. So, love to have. And laser light show. Tell all the pilots going over to keep one eye closed. So, okay. All right, next, we have new business, we're showing none. And additional items, board comments.
Yes, thank you for all the work you do.
Yes, I'm, I would like to say how proud I am of town staff and what y'all do for us. Um. We're very blessed.
Thanks.
And I'd like to, I'm very blessed to have. Board members sitting here with me. I'm, I'm, I'm proud to be. The, the weakest member of a very strong team. Well, it's hard to look right past you, you're, you're distinguished look there, it's very hard. Uh, although I'm not sure about.
I was gonna wear my hat, but I think you appreciate the.
Look at the monitor. Um. I'm looking at yours because I've already, I've already put my agenda.
Staff update.
Yes, staff update.
Does a couple brief things, so, uh, conditional zoning will be going back before council on September fourteen. That includes, um, including the two acre minimum acreage size provision that this board adopted last time. Uh, the rezoning for nineteen thirty-six Butler Bridge Road was approved by council on August tenth. So that's been completed, that is now zoned to neighborhood commercial. And, uh, just wanted to make you aware, staff's been working on. I've been calling it administrative corrections to the zoning code, just working on some of these tweaks and fixes, you know, issues we've identified over time. And I'm hoping to present the first one to you at your next meeting, which would be updates to our special use permit procedures. Uh, the most urgent need for that is currently we require all special use permit mailings to be sent by registered mail, which is about fifteen dollars a letter. Um, so it's very costly, I don't think, it's the only type of public notice mailing that requires that, so. Um. Other changes will be in the text amendment, but we're looking at changing that to first class mail, just like we do for everything else, save some taxpayer money. So like that.
Okay. Would there happen to be a, um. Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
So, Pat Boone did go through a state.